Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say "present" for roll call. Commissioner Katz?
Present.
Commissioner Lair?
Present.
President McLean-Hill? Commissioner McGraw?
Present.
Commissioner Neiman Brady?
Present.
For board members, a quorum is present. Commissioner Neiman Brady?
Good morning, everyone. Today I'll be presiding in Cynthia's absence. And I first wanted to acknowledge the 39 years of Marty Adams' incredible service to the city and to this organization. And I have a feeling we'll be celebrating this many times over over the next couple of months as we march towards your retirement. But thank you from on behalf of the board, on behalf of the city. It's an incredible accomplishment.
Thank you.
The second thing I wanted to cover was welcoming our new commissioner. For those of you who are not familiar with George McGraw, he's a leading expert on water and sanitation. And he was recently appointed to join us. He serves as the founder and CEO of Dig Deep, which, from my understanding, is the only water sanitation and hygiene organization solely focused on the U.S. And this is particularly quite incredible. I understand that there was a report that you put out called "Closing the Water Access Gap" in the U.S., which highlighted how many citizens and residents don't have access to clean water, to the tap, to toilets. And I understand it's over 2 million, which is an incredible thing to think about, that in this country, there is still water insecurity. So I applaud your efforts towards advancing this cause, given that multi-billion dollars is spent globally on improving water insecurity. And it seems like you're filling that gap for us here in the U.S. So that's wonderful and welcome.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything you would like to add or say as you join us?
Well, I will say briefly and thank you that it is an honor to be here. I'm humbled by this call from the mayor and really excited to, yeah, to bring a focus on equity, empowerment, and sustainability. Some things that I know the other board members have been working really closely on with staff here at LADWP. This is an incredible institution, incredible history, and full of incredible people, some of whom I've just started to meet. And I am really excited to get my feet wet, so to speak. So thanks for having me.
We'll certainly put you in the deep end. Thank you for laughing. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention, just as you think about water insecurity, you know, we are moving now into the depths of the summer and the heat. And there was a great piece in the LA Times today highlighting LADWP's AC unit opportunity for, to get a free AC unit. And so while clearly we have a lot of information on our website, the LA Times article I thought was extremely informative. And I encourage people to share that. And with that, we'll start to move through the agenda. We're going to defer Item C, election of officers, until President McLean-Hill is with us. And moving to general public comment.
Public comment is open at this time. There are no public commenters. Public comment is now closed.
Marty, I turn it to you.
Thank you very much and good morning, commissioners. First of all, on behalf of the entire staff, Commissioner McGraw, I'd like to welcome you to the department. And we are very excited to have you onboard. And your background in water, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna enjoy what we're about here. And we're gonna certainly benefit from your understanding and your appreciation of the issues. So very much looking forward to working with you. And I know there's a, as we talked yesterday, there's a lot to catch up on, a lot to learn. But I'm sure it'll be very interesting and we're really thrilled to have you onboard. So welcome. To Commissioner Neiman Brady's comment about the AC rebate program and all the cool LA programs we have going on, one thing I always want to remind the board and our customers is that, you know, we started Level Bill Pay, I guess, probably less than a year ago. And one of the things that we hear a lot from our customers, some don't have air conditioning, some have air conditioning, but they're afraid to run it in the summertime because they're concerned about the impacts on their bills. And so one of the benefits of Level Bill Pay is the fact that it'll, we can flatline, straightline your bill over the course of 12 months. So people don't see a sudden jump or an impact from, you know, having to run air conditioning or other things during the summertime. They can take that cost and spread that over the entire year. So hopefully folks will sign up for that and take advantage of that and then use that as a tool to help make sure they stay comfortable and safe during the summertime, especially as we see the heat starting to really warm up this week. I would like to let the board know that the strategic plan that we had an update on has been announced to the employees at large. We've completed that. This is our new roadmap. Talks about our mission, our core strategies for achieving very measurable objectives over the next three years. The last time we had an official plan was 2016. So it's been, that plan has been worked again on a smaller scale in the divisions and the systems. But this is the first time we had a new department-wide plan. So that's been rolled out and made available to everybody. We actually have a strategicplan.ladwp.com can be viewed on the website. And we're encouraging all of our employees and anyone else who's interested to look at that. And I want to thank Joe Romano and his team for shepherding that to the final stage of being complete and presentable and something that the public can look at and see what we plan to do and how we plan to measure ourselves in the future. Couple of quick other things here. The Drinking Water Quality Report for 2022 was published and it came out on June 30th, a requirement that we have to put out annually. Jonathan Leong, who heads up our Water Quality Division, is sitting in for En Sommo today. And so this is a report put out by his group. This highlights all the monitoring, testing, and treatment that we do for our water supply. And of course, we comply with all the state and federal drinking water standards. We're proud of our water and the quality that we serve. And it's interesting, during the pandemic, you know, we heard a lot of questions about, you know, could drinking water be a source of contamination? Could things travel through drinking water or wastewater, COVID and this and that? And providing drinking water was a critical component of public health during the last, you know, several years in particular. And so we're proud of the job that we've done there and continue to keep up the good work with our team and Jonathan and all the folks and also in all the water groups that maintain water quality throughout the system, you know, every day of the year. We are sponsoring the California Association of Black School Educators Annual, the 30 Annual Conference. They're looking at how to improve the education of particularly black girls, black young women. We have the folks from the department that are sent to join in recruiting efforts and really working to continue to create pathways for students to become aware of the department and find employment here in the future. And then lastly, we had a very good news. One of our teams, known as the Hydro Kings, went on to win a competition at the American Water Works Association Conference. It was, the annual conference this year was in Toronto. And one of our teams from Water Distribution was, they won the Hydrant Hysteria Competition. So I'd like to bring up Brionne Lindsey, who could tell us about that effort and what it involved and introduce the team and their award.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am proud and happy to present the Water Distribution Team from LADWP. As you guys know, back in, I think it was early summer, I'm sorry, early spring, we had a tap-off here at LADWP at our Summer West Training Facility. And these gentlemen, along with other folks, competitors, came out and they did a tap-off. And not only did you a tap-off, they did a meter madness competition as well as a hydrant hysteria competition. And this particular team excelled, excelled in two categories. One was a tap-off and one was a meter madness. And I'd like to call them up one by one. Well, let me show the video first. I think we have a video set up. So, is it queued up? All right. And those are the Hydro Kings. The Hydro Kings took place in two competitions. One was a tapping team, which consisted of Chris Torres, Tim Gonzalez, Joshua Madrid, and Coach Alfredo Sandoval. And we also had a fourth-place contestant, Mr. Sergio Barragon. And Sergio, if you guys remember, Sergio took first place at the state competition, Sergio Barragon. So unfortunately, he cannot be here today. But he had some family issues that he wanted to get through, but we celebrate him as well. And I wanted to bring up, one by one, the Hydro Kings for the Hydrant Hysteria First Place. As I call your name, please stand up. Mr. Chris Torres, Water Utility Work and Water Distribution. Mr. Torres? He has this huge personal trophy that each of the Hydro King members got. And I think it's pretty heavy. It's actually about the weight of a regular fire hydrant. We also have Mr. Tim Gonzalez, Water Utility Worker. Come on up. He brings up the team trophy, which is pretty awesome. And Mr. Alfredo Sandoval, Senior Water Utility Worker, Western District. Mr. Sandoval is the coach. He was also the coach for the tapping team as well. We are so proud of these gentlemen. They took a place in a competition that is national. So not only did they do well at the state level, but they were the best, or the first-place team in North America. Pretty awesome. So congratulations to you.
They have a question. How long does it take to do the whole assembly?
I'm sorry?
How long does it take to do the whole final round of assembly?
1:12.
1:12, 1 minute 12 seconds.
Wow.
First place, North America. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I would like to tell the board that we won't install a fire hydrant in the street in 1 minute 12 seconds.
What was pretty incredible about that video was the teamwork. You could see that they were very well orchestrated and aligned. And even afterwards, kind of the get-together you did too. That was really impressive.
Congratulations and thank you for sharing that with all of us. And that's the conclusion of my report.
All right, before we turn it to the different Water and Power updates, I believe there's some groups want to present something else?
Yeah.
Yeah. On behalf of Power System, we'd like to present a plaque that we specially designed for Marty Adams, 39 years of service. So we're just celebrating it with you. We have always enjoyed your leadership and camaraderie and support over the years. Water and Power System have worked together for many years. And your friends at Water System really have a high regard for you and enjoy working with you over the years. So I just want to present this to you.
Thank you, Simon.
All right. Don't sit down yet, Marty, so we have something for you on behalf of the Water System. But just share a quick anecdote. So this was, you know, we're all celebrating Marty's 39 years of being tenured here at LADWP. But we all chuckle in the waterside that his mind just works super fast. So effectively, it's 39 plus 39. It's actually 78 years of service. So in recognition of that, we have a very special gift. It's a double-time clock. No, it's actually gonna help you settle back to reality and shift down from double-time to hopefully something that we can all keep up with. But Mr. Lindsey and myself, I guess, will give you the little meter clock.
Absolutely. And the meter clock says, Marty L. Adams, General Manager, in appreciation of your support of the Water System, July 11th, 2023. And this is an actual meter that came out of the distribution system. And there is a certificate of authenticity with the meter number.
Is he gonna send me a bill?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, but I will turn it back to you, Simon. You want to start? Is there a power update?
No updates today.
Is there a water update?
No additional updates from water.
Additional updates? Okay. We've been right along. I'm not aware of any, but just want to check with the board if there's an introduction to any future motions?
Nope, none at this time.
None at this time. Great, very good. So then I will turn it over to another advocate.
We may have comments on individual items in the management reports. And if questions are raised about special-called items. But one item we'd like to mention is Item M2 called out an opportunity for a more general discussion. And OPA and DWP expect to be bringing forward a jointly-sponsored resolution to the board in November to address issues of shared costs and causation on our activities relative to other city departments. And we will, hopefully, this will assist DWP in identifying criteria and standards for the building of shared costs on remediation and other things. Thank you.
And just for a point of clarification, it's November, not October?
I'm sorry, it's October.
Okay, October. Very good. All right, thank you. Any comments and discussion with neighborhood council?
No community impact statements or formal positions were filed by any neighborhood councils on any of the items on today's agenda.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any items? I understand Number 5, you will be recusing yourself. Correct. Commissioner Katz? But any other items to be called special? Nope, not at this time. Okay. We will be deferring Item 1, and I am calling special 8 and 10. So with that, may I seek a motion for approval for Items 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 9?
Motion to approve Items 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 9?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Okay, very good. We'll continue with the remaining items later, and let's move to the management reports.
Okay, our first report is on prompt payment of contracts. And I'll turn it over to Anson Tillie to introduce this item.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. We have Andrew Verzi, the manager of Accounts Payable Disciplinements, and Greg Reed, Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion, for this presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. And welcome, Commissioner McGraw. And thank you for allowing us to provide this presentation. I am Greg Reed, Senior Assistant General Manager of the Office of Diversity Equity Inclusion, of course, joined by Andrew Verzi III, Principal Utility Accountant and Manager over Accounts Payable. And our report today is to provide additional information about LADWP's ability to provide prompt payments to its vendors as requested by the board in the board meeting on April 12th. This topic is very important as it is one of the eight strategic measures that was identified for our supplier diversity program in that same April 12th meeting. And this facet of our strategic measures and our relationship with our vendors is an important one to the success of our vendor community and their ability to provide services for us without undue financial burden. This topic is also relevant to our mayor's Executive Directive 4, which established the LA Business Steering Committee and tasked that committee to identify ways to reduce barriers and support small business creation, development, and growth in the city of Los Angeles, basically to foster a very business-friendly climate. As we know, small businesses in Los Angeles represent 99% of the businesses that have opened since 2022 and are responsible for 63% of the net new jobs nationwide. So fostering and creating an environment which supports our small businesses ultimately supports a vibrant economy for our city and for all of our citizens.
I'm sorry, you said that night, can you repeat the 90% stat?
99% of the businesses that are open within the city are considered small businesses, basically below $7.5 million per year revenue and less than 500 employees. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Verzi, who will walk us through our prompt payment discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. As Mr. Reed said, my name is Andrew Verzi. I'm the manager of Accounts Payable. And thank you for the opportunity for me to present this topic. The objective of this presentation is to give you a historical and current perspective on how timely we are paying our suppliers. Additionally, some areas where we feel we can improve. And lastly, a plan of action moving forward. The objective of this slide is to kind of give you a high-level overview of how many invoices we are processing as a department on a monthly basis. On average, we're processing approximately 10,000 invoices each and every month. Equates to about almost 500 a day. And with this process, it's very, very manual in nature. There's nothing automated. There's no automatic payments like we set up on our personal bills. This is all manually reviewed at the staff level. And what they're looking for is a three-way match. And at a high level, a three-way match is staff is looking to match the invoice to the contract and then ensuring that, you know, the goods that we procured or the services that were rendered are actually delivered. In theory, the three-way match is simple, straightforward. But problems do arise throughout the procurement-to-payment process. And when that three-way match is broken, that's generally when we see delays come into play. So I'll transition to the next slide. Timely payments. Basically, what this data is representing is invoices that we've paid within 30 days of invoice receipt, meaning the first time a department employee receives that invoice, how quickly are we getting the payment out the door? When this presentation was created, the June 2023 data wasn't available. I do have that information now, and it was 82%, meaning 82% of all invoices processed during the month of June were paid within 30 days. And as Mr. Reed stated, this is directly quoted in the City Controller's Handbook that it is city policy that we pay our suppliers and vendors within 30 days. As you will see highlighted in green is that... Yes.
Greg, it said 90 days.
I think the statistic that I mentioned was 99% of our businesses in the city are small.
I'm sorry, the first slide says that we're supposed to pay within 90 days, right?
I think that...
So that's our goal, but the city itself has a requirement to pay within 30?
Yes, it's a 30-day. The City Controller's Handbook advocates that we want to pay our suppliers within 30 days of invoice receipt. I believe the 90-day mark was, in 90 days, we're gonna come and provide you an update. Because 90 days is, in my opinion, is just way too long to wait for payment. So 30 days is a more accurate and representation of the industry as a whole is 30 days. And what you'll see highlighted in green here is where basically our operations have been over the last year. And what I want to point out is that this is a team effort. This isn't just one group in the department. This is department-wide. Invoices and coming across the department from each division, each operating and business unit. So it's a collaboration. And this also includes our city department, our city partners, and the Controller's Office. And what you'll see is over the last year, so there's been, I would say, a significant improvement from where it was historically. I attribute this to several different reasons. One of the main ones was is that when I first kind of came into Accounts Payable, there's a manual process of just getting these invoices into our system for processing. And what I was noticing, it was taking anywhere from three to seven days to get these invoices into our system. And this was just essentially idle, non-productive time. We've since, you know, reduced that time down to basically same day or one day. And from that, these results have been, you know, significantly better in my viewpoint. Additionally, we've had, you know, staffing in Accounts Payable, I would say, has been very consistent. And I think this has all been benefited from that. As important as that last slide was, I think this one's more important. This is a representation of all invoices that were not paid within 60 days. So this data gives us a better insight as to what are the problems that are happening. This is where the areas that we need to improve and this is where we need to focus on. You know, leverage some of the success we had on the previous slide and transition that into, how do we correct this? Again, following up, the June 2023 data was 5%, meaning 5% of the invoices processed in June were paid after 60 days.
Do you have a sense of what percentage of these are small businesses versus larger ones?
Unfortunately, I do not. You know, I'm hoping as we do better with our reporting is that we can get, being able to drill down and get some of these metrics as far as, you know, which vendors are really impacted by this. From the ancillary review that I've done, it's pretty widespread from all different types of invoices and different types of vendors that we pay. And there's multiple reasons for that. You know, kind of what I listed on the left there is some of the common reasons that we see in Accounts Payable is what's causing the delays. What really needs to be done moving forward is really, on a month-to-month basis, digging into these numbers and seeing, well, what's happening? Is it, you know, a certain type of invoice? Is it a certain type of vendor? Is it a certain type of contract? And to make improvements from that point. You know, in preparation for this presentation, I went through a single month highlighted there in green. And I selected January 2023 at random and individually reviewed 700 invoices, which is representative of that 7%, to see what was causing this. You know, 10% was related to Accounts Payable issues, meaning we just took too long to process it. There were maybe some administrative errors. Like I said, it's a very manual process, so sometimes things get key-punched wrong or our processes weren't followed the way they needed to be. The biggest thing I saw was about 50% of the time, these, they were submitted to Accounts Payable well after 30 days. Sometimes as late as, you know, 90 days. We were getting them late. And I want to make it clear from when an employee received this invoice. There are instances when invoices can come directly to Accounts Payable. This is generally speaking when we are purchasing materials and supplies and those are being delivered at a shop or a store's location. Because then we can use that receiving data as part of our three-way match. But when we're procuring services and other items, the invoices need to go directly to the contract administrator or the end-user that procured those services so they can then turn, give an authorization that, yes, we receive these and these meet our standards and we can go ahead and pay this invoice. And I'll also kind of caveat some of this is that there's a clear difference between processing and invoice related to materials and services than there are for professional services. Materials and services are kind of low-hanging fruit, easy to validate. And there's, our system does a good job of allowing this all to be kind of self-contained within one system. The challenges we have are related to our professional service contracts at a high level. Those require an immense amount of documentation to get processed, and they're very manual in nature. Oftentimes, there's some invoices that come to us that are, could be three inches thick and they manually need to be dropped out of Accounts Payable. They're manually reviewed, and then they're manually given to the Controller's Office for their review.
So it sounds like it's unlikely you could ever get to 100%?
I don't want to sell myself short. I'm up for the challenge.
Okay, okay.
And it's, and here's the thing, even in one month, if it was 100%, the job would never be done because they'll be in the next month with 10,000 invoices with another challenge. So I don't want to say no, but what I would say is realistic, I would love to keep that number always below 5%. And let's work through the issues and let's hope we can create efficiency somewhere to where we can, you know, not have, as you can see in some of the past, sometimes, and I know this was during the pandemic and transition to telework, where we got up to maybe 19, 20% paid after 60 days. That's a large number of invoices that sat for way too long. So keeping this number as low as possible is the goal going forward. And I want to take this opportunity to recognize that when we're late in paying our suppliers, there's an impact not only to the supplier themselves, you know, in meeting their obligations, their financial obligations, but an impact to the department as well. There's been times where you can be placed on a credit hold, materials aren't going to the job sites they need to. If we're paying for professional services, they could say, well, we're not gonna continue the project until we get paid. So there's ramifications across this, across the board. So keeping this number as low as possible is the objective going forward. And that's part of what we're doing.
And if I may add, I think that our small businesses are more apt to be a part of the professional services arena. And so the prompt payment capability is, our inability is gonna impact our small businesses more so than other purchases that we're making.
And that's a great point. And we want to try to lower the burden it is for to do business with the Department of Water and Power. We don't want it to be a burden. We want it to be an opportunity that's beneficial for both parties, right? So paying them timely is, from my perspective, is one of the most important things we can do. I'll transition to the next. This is depicting the discounts that we earn. Some of our vendors and suppliers offer terms discounts for timely or expedited payments. This, over the last year, also highlighted in green, is where we've been, I see, I've seen major improvements. For June 2023, we captured 96% of available discounts. And this is realized, actual financial savings for the department. It's just under $3 million a year, so for the fiscal year 2023, we saved just over $2.7 million just by paying our vendors timely. And I want to take this opportunity to recognize that this is truly a reflection of the teamwork that goes across the department. This is not one group. This is every business unit involved. And our city controller staff that's here at the department deserves a lot of credit for this as well, because when they have to review every invoice that exceeds $10,000, and when they know there's a discount involved, they make it a priority, they review it as quickly as possible, and they bring it back to Accounts Payable for a final settlement. So this is just a great representation of some of the progress we've made over the last year and the financial savings as a result of that.
And just to clarify, is this, are these percentages by dollar amount of discount available or by the contracts that had discounts?
So what it is, it's a dollar amount that was available. So basically, it's the calculation is how many, how much dollars did you save versus what was the potential?
Okay, great. Thank you.
So over the last three slides, we looked at invoices paid within 30 days, not paid in 60 days, discounts. But this slide kind of encapsulates all that information down to a single number. From the time you receive an invoice, how long does it take for a payment to go out the door? As you could see, from quarter one of 2022 was 47 days. We steadily got better throughout the calendar year of 2022, getting it down to 34, 26, and then 27. So highlighting the last half of 2022, getting it under that, on an average, under 30 days is a good mark. And then transitioning into 2023, for the first quarter, it was 32 days. For quarter two, meaning basically April through June for 2023, the total average is 24 days. And so, like I was mentioning earlier, you know, although this is a useful number, it doesn't tell the whole story. We have to kind of look, dissect these numbers and say, well, what's the processing times related to a materials and supplies invoice, which is a little bit easier to process versus a professional service-related invoice? And I've been kind of be able to parse out those numbers at a high level. So for materials and supplies and some simple services that I like to call, on average, for the second quarter, we processed those in 21 days. Our professional services, legal agreements, resolutions enacted by this board, it took us 34 days. And so that's where I view the area that we need to improve upon, because we're not meeting the city controller's requirements there. It's those 34 days. And like I was mentioning, the level of effort that it takes and the labor that it takes to get those processed is much greater than a simple materials and supplies invoice. And so there's areas where we think we can improve. What I will say is, when one of the three-way match items is broken for a professional service contract, the length of time it takes to get it fixed is pretty lengthy. You know, meaning if there's an administrative amendment need to be done to a contract, or if a purchase order needs to get done, that's oftentimes when I see in my office when things kind of just are sitting idly by. So trying to avoid some of that, give better contract administrator training, having a more collaborative approach, I think, will help bring these numbers down on both sides, meaning on the professional service side, we should make every effort to try and get that under 30 days. As Mr. Reed stated, you know, a lot of our small business community is going to be living in that realm of providing professional services. So trying to reduce the time it takes to process one of those invoices is a main objective that we have stemming from this presentation.
I'm sorry to ask you to go backwards, but could we, could we go back to the slide and talk about those discounts again for a quick second?
Yes.
Do we have a sense of how likely a diverse supplier or a small business is to offer a discount vis-à-vis a larger supplier?
I don't have that particularly. Generally, what happens is that the terms of the contract are established prior to coming to Accounts Payable. And like I was saying, hopefully, as we get better reporting coming out of our suppliers, we can definitely hone in on that and kind of do better reporting on that versus, you know, how are we doing across the board?
The reason I ask is because I imagine the larger the supplier and the larger the contract, the more likely it is that we have a discount potential to earn.
Yes.
And that that might create a reverse incentive for us. If we're prioritizing contracts with discounts inside the department for Accounts Payable, we may be more likely to put pressure on or achieve on those contracts, and that might run counter to our, to our opportunity to serve small businesses or diverse suppliers who aren't at the scale to offer those contracts. So I am curious about an analysis there, and I, while I appreciate that, you know, we're taking advantage of this opportunity for fiscal responsibility, and we need to do that. We need to make sure there are some protections in place that create, well, that protect those incentives from getting in the way of us processing, for instance, smaller accounts payable.
And absolutely. And I think, and that's a very well point, it's a great point. And my, my objective is, yes, let's capture all discounts we possibly can, but also pay, if you're not offering a discount, that shouldn't be a roadblock to not being paid timely, right? Keeping everybody under that 30-day mark should be the standard, not the exception.
I appreciate that.
And thank you for the question.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't people just, you know, charge more and offer the discount? In other words, they do their proposal, they, you know, submit it, and it's an X amount, and they're just, we'll just add, you know-
So almost building that buffer on top of it?
Yeah, you know, creating the buffer, and if they get the, you know, the discount applies, great. But if it doesn't, they end up with more money.
And I think there is instances where that probably does happen. Some of this goes into when the bids are taking place, which generally I don't have a ton of visibility into, because there is that segregation of duties of supply chain procuring the services and accounts payable paying. But there are times, I'm sure, some of our suppliers offer a terms discount in the hopes of, hey, you're not going to pay it in the timeframe that we require, which is, one of the more popular terms that we see is 2% 25 days, meaning you get a 2% discount if you can pay within 25 days. So, I mean, in an ideal world, we're paying everybody under 25 days. But your point is well observed and taken.
And Andrew, if I can add, if you do offer a discount, you have to give us 25 days to be, have that discount be considered in the cost that you're bidding, so that you, you know, that could be, you could be getting that award.
So that brings me kind of, as going through all the data, some areas where I feel like we can improve. You know, and the first one is reduce the time it takes to process invoices related to professional services. I feel like we've done this in an area, I'm going to be bringing on additional staff member whose main function is going to be kind of looking at these invoices. Right now, I've got about three staff members that do all of our professional services. Adding an additional person, I think, to help split up the work will help greatly, hopefully, pick up in the processing times related to those. The other one, and this is kind of just our internal jog in, which is improve the internal resolution form process. An IRF is basically sent when the three-way match is broken. It's something that we do within the system. Generally, when we're paying materials and supplies-related invoices, an IRF is sent to a transmittal point. This is just a middle person that goes and gets the help from the person that really needs to see this invoice. We think that there's ways to improve that. Right now, there's some-
Sit. Does that sit in your organization, or is that in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. And so what happens is we maintain this transmittal point listing. Ann and I have discussed this in some greater detail, that we want to route these problem invoices to a higher level. Right now, the divisions have the opportunity to say, they can pick their transmittal points. We've come up with an idea where maybe we're going to propose that it's got to be at a certain level. So this way, maybe it'll get eyes on the problem faster. Because transmittal points are in a tough spot where they get a problem invoice. They're not exactly sure who it belongs to, and then they got to research on where it needs to go. You know, if we route this up to a higher level, they might know the person responsible and can get resolution quicker. So the IRF process is just something that we do internally to try and fix a broken invoice. Basically, something's not matched. Some of the more common reasons for an IRF is, you know, when we get a materials invoice, the materials are not received at the store. And so there could be a valid reason for that. The supplier gave us an invoice before the materials actually showed up there. Or there are times our storekeepers are extremely, extremely busy, and they just haven't gotten to it. So it's just our way of kind of flagging like, hey, this invoice is ready to be paid. Once you do the receiving, let us know, and we can process and pay it. Part of it is, is the system doesn't necessarily, once it's received, lend itself to Accounts Payable to say, hey, now this is ready to be paid. We've manually got to open it back up and to see if it's actually ready for processing. So creating better lines of communication is where, is the focus here. The next bullet point is, you know, provide mandatory contract administrator, contract administrator training. Right now, I empathize with contract administrators. They have a very difficult job. This is just an ancillary function of what they do on a day-to-day basis. This isn't their primary role. They're often engineers, utility administrators, and if it's their first time managing a contract, you can be a little overwhelmed at times going through the procurement process. So giving them resources, giving them points of contact that they could reach out to should they have questions, I think would serve the entire department well. And I think Accounts Payable can lend itself and provide some good resources as to, you know, here's some good examples of how invoices were submitted and they got processed really, really quickly. Here's some other examples of invoices that came in, and then they sat, and here's the reasons why, and let's try to avoid those. So I think having a collaborative approach, maybe with supply chain, and developing a training program for contract administrators would be very, very useful. And then the last bullet point was a follow-up topic that we discussed at the last meeting when this item was presented. And that's increase the number of vendors and suppliers paid via ACH. The good news is, we're going to be embarking on a new ERP program and a new ERP application that will lend itself to doing mass ACH payments. The problem we currently have today is the system that we're using is relatively old, and it doesn't allow for mass ACH payments. When we pay suppliers via ACH and wire today, we have to essentially manually process that again twice. It's not a true ACH payment. What we're doing, we're basically doing a bank-to-bank transfer. And so this requires another level of approvals, a level round of notification given to Cash Treasury, which is our city partner that does this service for us. But we have gotten into some great conversations with the Controller's Office, Cash Treasury, a lot of the-
Why is there that intermediary of Cash Treasury?
Because the department doesn't necessarily control its own cash, meaning that we have to work through Cash Treasury in order to do the final settlement. So the department doesn't control its own bank account. So even when we pay our, our normal vendors by checks, we've got to give advance notice to Cash Treasury to move funds around from the water revenue fund, the power revenue fund, to an actual disbursements account. So they almost are like our bankers. They're that intermediary that does the banking for us. Because all of our cash is kind of maintained and invested with the Office of Finance as part of the city. Yeah. So we're hoping in the future what we can do is mass ACH payments and not have to do this manual setup and this manual process. And we can get everybody set up this way, and then kind of modernize our system, modernize our processes to where our suppliers aren't spending time going to the bank to cash a check. There's no administrative burden of taking a check to the bank. They can just see the money go in there, and they can do what they do best, which is run their business.
Is that a process we can streamline internally ourselves, or does that involve working with other city departments?
It involves working with other city departments today.
So that's a big job?
Yes, it's a very big job. And so what I would hate to do is commit to something facing, you know, we can take this on internally, impact other city operations, and then turn around and, when we were making strides and improvements and getting people paid right around the 30-day mark, because this is such a manual setup, they see processing times get delayed because of it. And so there's that balancing act that we try to take care of as like, yeah, this should definitely qualify. We really don't want $5 million checks just going out in the mail, so it's safer and it's more reliable to do an ACH or a wire. But at the same time, that shouldn't just be a roadblock for all of our suppliers. We've got to come up with a better way of doing that.
Do we have a sense from data what kind of burden this ACH problem is contributing vis-à-vis the larger percentage of payments we're missing in the 30-day window? Like, how big of a, what I'm trying to get at is, is how big of a priority should this piece of the puzzle be to get to that 30 days?
Do you mind if I ask you a follow-up question, Greg? So is it something that we're saying, like, something we should be doing today? Because the plan is for this ERP system to go live in July 1st, 2025. I know that's two years from now, and I know that's not a great answer or a great response. Are there things we can do between now and July 1, 2025? Potentially, on a mass scale, I don't, there is some challenges there that would drastically impact internal operations and city operations as well, that I see.
I guess my question was more of, okay, if we know we're missing the 30-day window for X number of payments, how many, what percentage of those X number of payments is because of this ACH problem where we have the intermediary we're trying to step through? And if so, you know, if we're looking at a timeline of two years to get this new system in place, should we be looking at, you know, alternatives in the meantime, as you mentioned? Or should we be placing that attention elsewhere? If this isn't, if this isn't the largest piece of this puzzle, and this is going to take us two years, we can focus on something else.
Yeah, I wouldn't say this is a main driver of delays of payments. I mean, that, working with that intermediary, I would say the main driver is when something is broken within the three-way match, meaning something's wrong with the invoice, or something's wrong with the contract, or simply an invoice sat on someone's desk for too long. So even kind of going back to the previous slides where we're talked about invoices not paid within 60 days and highlighting that January 2023 month, when I was going through those, 15% of the ones that weren't paid within 60 days were because the invoices were being sent to a contract administrator who had retired. And so that handoff didn't necessarily happen when it needed to. So invoices were being sent to somebody that no longer worked here at the department, and it took several months to understand what was going on. And then our supplier had to go ahead and re-invoice us, and then we had a huge influx at one time to try and get them caught up. But a lot of these were dated well beyond 60 days. They were probably 90 to 120 days past due, and it was simply they were just going to the wrong person.
Thank you.
And so lastly, that kind of brings us to our plan of action. You know, and that first bullet point is, you know, review and analyze historical payment data to obtain a better understanding where deficiencies may exist. And I think that's kind of what we're doing today. And this is something that we need to continue on a monthly basis routinely. And this is something where I'll take a kind of accountability in, because I use and work with this data daily. And so when I'm getting our monthly reports, really dig into the data, go through those invoices to see what's causing it and make corrections as needed, work with the divisions across the department to make the corrections. As a part of it, allocate additional staff and resources to help reduce processing times related to manual vouchers, which are our professional service and legal invoices. And we have plans in place to take care of that, and hopefully, that'll be accomplished before September 1st. The next is enhanced training for contract administrators and their support staff. You know, contract administrators work very closely with their support staff for getting invoices processed. So make sure we're including those employees as well for the training materials that we can offer. And then lastly, is just to continue to monitor how we're achieving in these areas. We need to know exactly how we're doing. You know, we've always been kind of reporting on these discounts earned, but we should also make it a greater emphasis, how quickly are we paying our suppliers? Actually, come up with that number. It's taking 35 days, or it's taking 25 days. We should be reporting that number, so we know when improvement needs to be met. And at that point, this concludes my presentation. I'm willing to answer any questions, or Greg, if you have anything else.
Not at this time, no. Thank you very much. That was very thorough.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another presentation?
Yes.
We have the Office of Emergency Management presentation, just to follow up on the windstorm and the preparation and the changes that we've made since then. So we have Brian Lamb is going to present, and then we have Dan Ashelman here to present the topic.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Ashelman. I'm the Chief Safety Officer here at the Department of Water and Power. And thank you for this opportunity to talk about the Office of Emergency Management, which has recently been placed under my group. Mr. Brian Lamb, who is the supervisor of that office, is going to give the presentation. He'll cover just the overview of the office, some of the interaction that it has within the department, and also with external agencies. And like Aaron mentioned, some of the improvements that have been put in place in the aftermath of the significant weather events that our city and service areas saw early this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brian Lamb, and I'll be available for questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Executive Management. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide you an overview of the Office of Emergency Management. Here's our current ERG chart. I'm the supervisor, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator 2. We have a total of five position in our office. Three, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, one for each of the systems, joint, water and power. And then we have a vacancy currently in a management analyst position. We are planning to hire in this- We are planning to hire in this fiscal year additional emergency preparedness coordinator ones to supplement our office and our operations as we-
How many?
We're hiring one who's going to be starting in July 17th and we are three additional one. We haven't started the hiring process yet. So a total of four for this fiscal year. In addition, as Dan indicated, we've moved under the corporate safety. We used to be part of the security services division and emergency management. And since we moved under corporate safety, we now have the resource office to support us. Although their main task is still to continue their mission and task for the COVID and pandemic surges, they will be supporting our operations. Storm restoration lessons learned from February storms is coordination with our internal, external agencies. So since the February storms, we've had a lot of planning events. We've had tabletop exercises with power system. We also had clarification on processes on how to request support from the city's emergency management department to activate the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, to support our operations. So that's a clear process. Office of Emergency Management, when that request comes through, will reach out to the city's emergency management department duty officer and then they can request the support from the other city agencies, such as the first response agencies. In addition, we've also coordinated closely with our corporate strategy and communications and customer service. And what, the reason why is we found the, the commonality of, of the issue that arise, which is information sharing. Information was not accurate. It was not timely. It is not consistent. So what we've done since then is we have in prior to any incident, just like we just had this morning at 8:00 AM for the heat, heat wave that's coming through starting today, is we ensure that we have water system, we have power system, corporate communication, customer service division, office emergency management. And in addition, our external partner agency is National Weather Service. So that's a, that's a standard protocol for us now. We will always have National Weather Service provide the forecast. In addition, it provides managers, operations chief to ask additional questions in specific areas.
Brian, can you take a step back for us and just explain the, the path of activation of the various offices? Cause I'm a little confused. So with something like a, a heat storm that comes, you have a little bit of a heads up. And so you're doing, as you're doing today, preparing for those. What is the level of activation and when do things get elevated to the city and to other agencies? And then separately, can you walk us through the path of what it looks like in, in, in a emergency such as an earthquake or a wildfire or something that happens very quickly? What is the, how does the escalation?
Sure, absolutely. So internally for our activation is we'll have a, we'll have a conference call. So all systems will be involved. Our main players are power system. They'll have PT and D, PSO, PCNM, all the different-
You're flagging it for them such as morning call?
We are leading that for coordinating, yes, we are.
And so do each of those entities have designated people who are officially serving in that capacity? So when you activate the EOC or whatever your terminology is for an activation center, are, are those people designated ahead of time and so you call them or is it just by unit?
No, correct. So if the city's emergency operations center is activated, there is actually a call out list. The call out list is actually, there's an actual memo that sits at the voice operations center on the second floor. And once activation occurs, they will then conduct the call out list to both power system and water system EOC responders.
But do we not then have an internal DOC or like a department operations center or department EOC?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're starting that. So before the, the storms, we had these different operations centers. But in Office of Emergency Management, our role prior to the storm was more of a support role. Moving forward, we're leading the coordination effort. So we will have a call out list for the department operations centers. And not only that, take in addition, we're going to be, and that's part of my speaking points is internally, it's whether water system has a water emergency command center at the Temple Street Yard or power distribution operations center at the Artesian Yard or even 1471 here, GFB or 921. Doesn't matter which system it is going to be affected by the incident. We're going to be able to utilize it as a universal. So it's not going to be like, hey, your power system, you own the operations center. Water system, you own the operations center. There's going to be operational needs and that's how we're going to activate the operations center. And we're going to standardize that in the future.
And do you have, and sorry if this is jumping ahead, do you have a web EOC platform that allows the cross department communication or not yet?
So the city went away from that. So the current one is VOC. And we do have the capability to remotely log in. So that way-
But only during a city activation? Do you have an internal system?
We don't, we don't have an internal system. To answer your question, we don't have an internal system. We only have that VOC for the city to have eyes on the situational awareness.
Yeah. It might be good to think about some sort of internal system or whether we could piggyback on an existing city contract, have access to that. Because there are going to be emergencies that don't rise to the full city EOC activation level and that coordination internally with DWP. I'm sure there's still a lot to learn here. So sorry for if I'm, you know. But just, you know, looking at what we do internally with UCLA, that's been really key in activations to have a central place where these updates are shared. So conference calls are great and that's a good starting point, but having
A log of sorts?
A platform, yeah. Like that's where, you know, key events are shared. And so maybe I'm not understanding and you do have something and it's just not a formal EOC software. But it'd be good to know how that coordination takes place. Cause you were mentioning challenges with information sharing. So I'd be happy to talk offline as well, not during the board meeting and share some of the tools and lessons learned from our EOC and, and/or connect you to our Office of Emergency Management. We're constantly working on similar challenges and might have some tools that we could recommend.
Sure, definitely. Right now, just for communications, we work closely with Joe Ramallah's group. So they also have, they have a representative of all the conference calls and even the activations. So their group along with Matthew Hale will be sharing a lot of the information internally and externally. And they, they, they should have the, the groups that they send them to, so the distribution list.
But there isn't like a, there's no web platform that everyone can log into and see like, this is the status, this is how many trees we're addressing, this is, you know. So that we don't have unless it's a city level activation.
Absolutely.
I think we would both support you exploring that.
Absolutely. I appreciate the support.
Yep.
So to stay accountable and transparent, since after action, our Office of Emergency Management drafted an after action report. There's approximately 50 after action items listed on here. You'll see on the categories, it'll be strategic communication plan and then action items, responsible parties and target dates. So this keeps us not only the responsible parties accountable, but Office of Emergency Management as a custodial of this document accountable. So this document is now uploaded into Smart Sheets, which is a software where the responsible parties are going to be able to update their own updates. So in the past, it just used to be sending, you know, Excel spreadsheet. You update documents and then send back and then what happens is we find that there's different variations of this document. So, and then loss of information. So now the responsible parties will be able to update it. So if their target dates are not met, then they can update and provide an updated target date for them. So again, we want to be transparent with our after action storm tracker and have the ability to share that. So if there's anyone else besides the responsible parties, we're able to kind of run a report for you or even provide you access to, to the document and it's in real time.
So if we look at this, everything on the, it looks like A through K should all be complete?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
And so back to the personnel issue. So the people who are tagged for a citywide EOC, do they all receive like the state level training and everything? Or like what level of trained personnel do we have within DWP?
So the standard for our EOC responder, they, they take the ICS, IS 100, 200, 700, 800. That's a prima independent study classes online. In addition, they're required to take the ICS 300 and 400. That's through a fire department that provides that training.
And is, how deep is our bench? So is there one person for each unit or are there multiple people trained to step in if that person's unavailable to respond?
So yeah, there's a, there's a call out list. There are approximately at least about 10 on each system.
Okay.
Yeah. In addition, so at the EOC pod that we manage, which is utility pod, there's actually three seats. So a lot of times, even when we have two responders, one responders can also act as the DOC or the, the EOC branch director for the utility pod.
Okay, excellent. And they're all fully trained?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide is incident command structure. We find that this is very important to integrate into any type of incidents. Since the February storms, we have integrated the incident command structure through the support of our Aqueduct operations, as you may know. And then also most recently, our Haynes Generation Station, the bridge structural damage. So with that, you know, we have incident commander. Incident commander is actually the incident commander of the incident. So we as Office of Emergency Management do not take over that role. For Aqueducts, that's going to be Adam Perez. For Haynes Generation Station is going to be Ian Guthrie. We help coordinate the support roles, internal stakeholders and any external stakeholders that are needed. And we help coordinate and facilitate those efforts. In addition, we have our Chief Safety Officer, Dan Ashelman. We incorporate corporate safety for our subject matter expert guidelines. And then you'll see on the bottom from left to right, operations, planning, logistics, finance and admin. We have to have a structure in place. For those who are not familiar with ICS, it's, it's permanent. For instance, in Aqueduct operations, when we had a coordination call, we found that, hey, the support from fleet operations was getting stretched thin and they may need to kind of forward think about, hey, bringing in contractors, requesting mutual aid. Those conversations were driving. So we have to be forward thinking, being proactive and taking a proactive approach and not reactive. So while power system was also thinking about, hey, we need support for the gorge. Fleet operations then will have to prioritize how they would support it.
And so the liaison officer, that is someone from your group?
The liaison officer, yes, correct.
So that's-
And then planning and making sure we have our planning efforts. That's all through the coordination calls and then also they provide a summary report.
And do you rotate your operations section chief based on incident? So like water is in charge, if it's a water incident, powers or what's your structure there?
For power, they have a structure in place already. So they have the, like the water emergency command center. So they actually have a work structure. Power system, we're working to incorporate that. We don't have one for power system at this time.
Okay. So while we're on this slide, I'm going to digress slightly for a second and tell a quick story. So I attended the alignment rodeo, I don't know, it was like a month ago. And there was a command center unit there, a mobile unit that you could tour and take a look at, which was very impressive. And I understand that we have two different ones that are used for different purposes. But it became clear to me that we may need more of those. That if there were concurrent issues or emergencies, we would really only be able to deploy the mobile unit to one.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if you're explore, if this is your group that should be exploring whether we're appropriately, not staffed, but if we've got the equipment we need in order to respond to the emergency at the time? Or is that, does that responsibility rest elsewhere?
So right in the past, the system would purchase their own. Currently, water system will be also purchasing their own. It would be available within a year. But through the Office of Corporate Safety, we're planning to track all equipment across the department wide. And hopefully the goal is to share the resource. If it's, you know, power and water needs that resource for their operations of their emergency, then the goal is to have them share the equipment.
Okay, but currently, so water is getting-
They have water. So currently in the department, you're right. We only have two, one from electric trouble and one from the Office of Emergency Management. That's the one you saw at the alignment, sort of emergency command post vehicle.
And I imagine the, the water one that's being built is being outfitted particularly for water's needs and not really-
A department wide need.
Department. I don't know if that ship has sailed, but I think we should be considering the joint needs. Because presumably whenever there is a water problem, there's typically something power needs to do and vice versa. So I would encourage you to, to, to take that and, and also investigate the need for a broader one for the, another one for the department.
Yeah, and I just want to say a word about that as well. Congratulations, Marty. I was watching the meeting from the beginning on YouTube, so it-
Works.
It works. Actually, it's a really nice way to be present. You know, this is an important presentation. I've been listening to all of the questions and all of the observations, especially those related to the systems that we have in place to support emergency management operations. And, you know, we are, from a systems perspective, just not meeting the mark yet. And it's a little, not a little, it's very concerning that we are not. So as we begin to prioritize what it is we're doing and how we're doing it, what I know is you don't have the ability to tell water to not do what they're doing and to do something different. I do know that Marty, you and Aram do. And I think that it's really important that we step back and begin to approach this as a department, you know, with and analyze our needs from a department perspective and build the systems that are necessary to deploy a significant department wide emergency management operation. We, anything could happen at any time. The reason we're here is because we had an absolute catastrophic collapse of our management systems with respect to the, the storms. And, you know, and we saw a little window into what that could look like if it were something other than, if it were more than a single incident happening for a discrete period of time that we could deploy crews to, to deal with. So, you know, I, the, the piece that I'm interested in seeing is not only understanding where we are now, but I'm very interested in understanding where we plan to be and by when and how we're meeting these gaps in a way that aligns with the concept of preparedness. So, you know, that both relates to our technology. Because what I didn't hear when we were talking about the callouts and who's involved, I didn't hear technology at all. And I've seen the emails. We can't be managing communications in terms of an emergency response through email chains with, you know, 50 people CC. So we have got to be assessing our internal, our internal technology and putting in place the infrastructure necessary to independently stand up and see what needs to occur in the context of, you know, our own capacity. And then we have to make sure that we have got more than one. And I've seen those, those, you know, vehicles too, that we've got sufficient emergency management equipment to support the department's needs. So that would be my, my direction to our senior management that when we see this again, that we start to see dates aligned with how we're getting to, because for us, if we don't know by when, it's hard for us to be effective or to be substantively exercising our role, our oversight role. This is a nice conversation if you're just saying, this is what we're doing. This is what we plan and we hope this will happen and maybe that will happen. As opposed to, this is our plan, this is when we plan to get it done, which allows us to provide more meaningful feedback. And then the response to that feedback has to come back, you know, in a couple of months. And that's a long time with some, some action plan incorporated around that. And I'm sorry, this has been a great presentation.
I would also be interested, I, I know that City of LA probably has some full scale exercises, but I'm curious, you know, besides just training on process and procedure, I know training takes time and energy, but I think there's no substitute for full scale exercise or some tabletop exercises. How much of that is happening with our staff internally?
So since the February storm, we've had two tabletop exercises. We'll be having our GRDEX compliance exercise on November 14th. It's a full functional exercise that tests our capabilities on cybersecurity, our physical security and our grids.
Have to make the board office aware of these exercises so that if a commissioner- Have to make the board office aware of these exercises so that if a commissioner's interested in observing, that they can be present.
Absolutely.
And as it relates to the shakeout, the annual shakeout, do you do, or perhaps it's worth doing a response sooner?
So we send, we do do a shakeout event. So we send a response to shakeout and participate in that. And then we send out the distribution forms to all the facility manager. We call it the building emergency coordinator list. They do, then complete that task, and they communicate how they verbalize that. Some facilities, we don't, there's no P A announcement, so it might be a small tailgate or just might be a big announcement. But to answer, we also are planning to host emergency preparedness workshop. We do understand that the city hasn't been conducting that, and we used to actually be a sponsor of the city's emergency management workshop. So my goal was to bring in that workshop here at our auditorium and conduct that at the end of September. That date hasn't been determined yet. We are still looking and engaging our speakers and our objective for that. So we did talk to the fire department, we did talk to the police department, and we have some other, I guess as an introductory workshop for our first annual, we want to make sure it's nice and sweet and direct to the point of emergency preparedness to plan for our employees. At the end of the day, we can do as much plan as possible, but if we're not preparing our employees, they're not going to be feeling comfortable to leave their homes and to come here as disaster service workers. I mean, yes, there's obligation, but you, you know, what if they don't respond? How are you going to hold their hands and say, hey, you need to be here? So we need to ensure that they are comfortable in their training, prepared at home, and prepared at work, so they can feel comfortable to be away from home for possibly weeks at a time. Lastly, finance and admin, I didn't talk about that, but we work closely with Ann Santilli's group through F S O, and this is before the pandemic or even the adverse weather. We work with them and the city C L's office to ensure that we track costs and expenditure. So for those operations, they were getting weekly reports on providing costs, tracking on their COVID expenditures and their labor hours. We've also done that for the Aqueduct emergency operations. So, you know, providing work orders and charge number and pre-identifying those, so you can provide that to employees ahead of the incident versus backlogging the accounting process. Any question, additional questions on this slide? Activation levels, I know Commissioner Neiman Brady asked about that. So prior to an incident here in the department, we have a coordination call. If it's an earthquake, we'll have a coordination call and escalate those levels. Here, right now, in the department for power system, we are not aligned. At one point, we were aligned with the city, but the city switched. The city switched the levels from level three being the lowest, now level three is being the highest, so, or yeah, flip-flop like that. So I was told and informed by power system that if we wanted to align back with the city, that it would be another, a board resolution. Would that be correct, Simon, or board proposal?
We need to have more discussions on that.
Okay. So right now, we are not currently aligned. I just want to make that clear. But in our levels, we do have level one, two, and three, and that in power system, it goes by the outages. Conditions to activate the plan, as I discussed earlier, we already actually had a conference call and planned for this heat wave. The heat wave starts today. The peak of the heat wave for this week is going to be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the valley is going to be about 110 to 112 up in Woodland Hills. So we have plans in place where customer service division during the pandemic, due to COVID, they were no longer housed with electric trouble. They're going to be, they have been requested to be housed together, electric trouble to provide that accurate, timely information sharing, and they're going to be starting on Thursday, this Thursday. Chain of command and coordination call, we want to make sure that everyone is well-informed going up to chain of command through our systems, our commissioners, our external stakeholders, council office, everyone is informed. So if there's a request, Joe's office and Matthew Hale's office will provide the same information, that's a goal, as someone in power system. Emergency functions who will perform that will go by the plan in place that we have, our specific procedures, as we said, are different levels from the city. We'll activate at the different levels, have a coordination call. If there's need to rise, it's go from level one to level two to level three, then they'll escalate it. That, based on power system, is based on outages. We have procedures in place through I C S for accountability of our personnel, our customers, our visitors. Want to ensure that we're tracking our, our staff, making sure there's a safety officer in place. You know, if they're working eight, 10, 12 hours, even 16 hours on, making sure that, hey, I know your adrenaline is, you know, going, but you will need some rest. So we need to recognize that. Having a safety officer on the boots on the ground, on the operational level is key so we can recognize that, hey, I know you're working, I know you want to continue your work and restore power or restore any truck line base, but it's also important that we recognize that, hey, they may be getting fatigue. That's going to be a safety concern, and we don't want any injuries to happen or near misses at all.
So we have a safety officer in place or we want to have it in place?
We want to have a safety officer in place at all times. I, I know at incident. We will incorporate that. So I C S chart is scalable, so we want to have that in place on, on the field level. On the field level, they do have that, but we want to make sure that we're having a safety officer in our org chart too, to provide that briefing and stuff.
Okay.
Lastly, for equipment, as you guys indicated, the need for more emergency preparedness, more emergency vehicles, right now with the resource office and through corporate safety, we're actually going to be tracking all the equipment department-wide. So again, if power system needs equipment that power system has, they may request that, and then not only request it, but we'll have the information on the deployment process. Lastly, in the bull point, review the plan with our workers, ensuring that everyone, not only our managers who sign off on our plans, but also our operational staff understand the emergency plans we have in place. We submit that annually, joint the department emergency plan, the water plan, and also power plan, ensuring that everyone is well-informed on the plan. Key O E M initiatives, you'll see on top, we have the Mayor Karen Bass Executive Directive One. In addition to my role as the supervisor of emergency management, I also am the incident commander of the Executive Directive One Build L.A. In that process, we receive, we coordinate with city council, mayor's office on regular meetings. We also develop and streamline processes for developers. There's a project powerhouse, but we also, in addition, I'm not sure if you know, but we also do case management, which is like a concierge service. It's a proactive approach to bring in developers, the council representation that's representing them, their expeditors. We bring them onto a meeting and have a whole planning meeting on how to engage them to go over the hurdles that there are challenges that they're facing. So a lot of times, you know, they're first to say, well, D W P is holding it up. Well, what are you facing? So a lot of times, it's already late because if they want to, if they submit their permits and they come to us, the plan's already complete, and then we tell them that, hey, you not, you don't have enough space planning for your power. So for instance, the vault, I'm not going to get too much in details because I don't know about, I know what we've been facing, and say, hey, you don't have enough space for a vault, or hey, your scaffolding is too close to the power pole. So we want to engage with the developers, the city council, to understand that, hey, some of the challenges they are facing by having a case management and concierge service that we have. So we have a priority planning meeting with them to help them get over the hurdles. Bottom left, you'll see is the Haynes Bridge incident. You can see right there in the green circle, that's where the structural integrity of the bridge. So we have a meeting every two weeks currently. In the beginning of the incident, we had a weekly meeting with our incident commander, environmental affairs, corporate health and safety, corporate, corporate strategy and communications, and also our customer service division to ensure that we had the support for incident commander Ian Guthrie. In the middle, you'll see is our continuity of operations plan. It's reviewed annually, and that's submitted to the city as well with our department emergency plan, our water system plan, and our power system plan. And lastly, what I want to engage more, I know it's a pandemic, but to provide more preparedness efforts. Bottom right, you'll see we had an emergency preparedness webinar. We engaged with L A F D. We also have a water quality division there, talked about how to prepare our employees so they can be ready to respond to support and respond to support the residents of the community of Los Angeles. And that's the end of my presentation. At this time, I'll open up to questions.
I don't know that I have any remaining questions, but I just want to be clear on some of the action items.
Yes.
At least that I feel are tactically immediate. One is around tech and the communication platform beyond email communications. I mean, email is still necessary, but something like Commissioner Katz suggested. So tech inclusion, that's important that we want you to follow up on.
Yes.
Mobile unit coordination, figuring out what's needed there. And then I think for the broader group, there's a comment on just the overarching need for the organization to be one and what, and evaluate what is needed from an emergency response perspective as one.
Absolutely.
I'm curious about how all of this is documented because, again, my sort of anxiety exists because when you refer to, we have a plan that we submit annually, I assume that we've always had plans and that we've always submitted them annually.
Correct.
And so that doesn't necessarily translate into, you know, superb preparedness or action. So the new processes and the pieces that are being stirred up, how is that being documented and institutionalized?
What I, what I would propose is I'll draft the report so I can give you an outlook of our plan. If we can do like one-year, five-year plan, 10-year plan, and incorporate some of these emergency vehicles, I can draft the report for that.
When I say how's it, how's it being documented, I just mean like, if we're thinking about emergency management and from a systematic perspective, and you mentioned that, you know, all of our employees need to be trained and brought up to speed, you know, I'm curious about not just the timing for that, but how is that being documented internally so that, let's say, we have an emergency or something occurs and you and your second-in-command, you know, are stranded on the other side of the country, you know, can't get back. Actually, you know, that happened to our mayor during nine 11. I remember he was out of town and could not get back for days. Is there a book? Is there, you know, what's the Bible? How does, can somebody just walk in, stand up, pick it up? Is there a go switch and everything falls into place? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so, so right now, our plans are shared on our website. So that's the current process. That's the only thing we have right now, as of now.
Can I, can I just, if I can answer?
Yes.
So the, it's important to know what we have now and where we want to go. So I think the, the emergency preparedness documents is a specific document, and it goes all the way to a group level. So if you have, for example, water distribution would have a, a platform. The, the water test lab will, will have a document that describes their emergency preparedness based on their, their individual local needs that they have. Power system puts a power system overall document that kind of, that's an umbrella document. When we met and, and my, my direction to the team is we, we must have L A D W P-wide document that actually incorporates these local, without going into the details, where we raise it up to, let's say, a major earthquake or a major disaster, that we have one platform that we can stay on and let the local groups activate their own emergency plan so we can pull it together. That umbrella document is the one that I, that doesn't exist right now that we need to create that umbrella because that's the document that ties up to the city emergency and the state emergency. So we are missing that, that overall umbrella that is consistent. So when we did the quality control over these documents, I had them all lined up on, on a table. When we read the, the individual documents, we might have contradictory activities and resource needs that are not totalized at the department level. So my instructions or my, my request to the team is to help us get to that level where we can come to the board and say, these are the cascading plans that we have, and they're all coherent with each other, and everybody is trained on how to connect with each other. So for example, on the Haynes, it's a local bridge failure that happened at Haynes Power Plant, although it is declared an emergency, but the activation of the Haynes Power Plant will take the precedent and, and actually go forward. But if they have to raise it up to the next level, we will have a resource and, and the protocol in place for us to draw resources from other places, just like the Aqueduct drew resources from the power system when they were in need of operators and stuff like that. But how do you make those connections is missing right now? And I think when we come back, as Board President said, about the details of how these things are going to come together, we need to have those details and dates of how we're going to do it and exercise on it because that's where we're going to find the fatal flaws in this plan, make it better.
So I appreciate that. Thank you. And what you've said is that that's what you've requested this team to do.
Yes.
Have you given this team a timeframe by which you want this accomplished?
Yes, we, we spoke internally, July was the, the time where we were going to do the exercise, and by the end of this year, we would, we would have that plan that, that I just described, the overall plan. By the end of the year, we should have those in place because of the organizational alignment that we went through. That gives us the visibility with the safety team. So I know we are doing a lot of, a lot of fact-finding on who, there are some groups that the document doesn't exist, so we gotta, we gotta get those, and we gotta have, by the end of the year, we will have a, a unified plan for, for the department. That's, that's my, that's, that's my goal for, for having that in place.
Okay. That, that's helpful. That at least gives me something to track. And that's always useful. So then we will check in in September just to see where we are, but I think that, you know, everything takes time. But realistically, it's, you know, we live in the land, as you know, of earthquakes and every other kind of potential calamity, and, and we don't want to be in a position where, you know, we are underprepared to respond. So thank you.
And, and the team has been doing, I think Commissioner Neiman Brady brought a point about interchangeability of these protocols, and that's part of the, equipment cannot be where, where it can't be interchanged. It's just like the centers that we have, when we open the door, everybody that is trained needs to walk in, whether, regardless of where it is, and all the equipment in, in there should be standardized, and we should be just hitting the ground running. That, the team has been doing a lot of modification and upgrades to the system, so we, we, we should have brought that progress on those. So they've been working very hard on making those centers same standards all across the department so we can use them very efficiently. So we'll bring some updates on those too.
September.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
All right, then, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And I think with no doubt, with the support of executive management and the commissioners, I think we'd be able to excel and bring, bring us in the forefront of emergency management for the department. Thank you.
For the city.
Thanks.
And the city.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
I know there were several. Are there any questions or comments with respect to filed items?
Nope, not at this time.
And item L one, minutes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Thank you. I know that we have items in five, in eight, and in nine called, well, are all called.
I'm ten, yeah.
Oh, and ten. I'm sorry, not nine, but ten are called special. So in five, we've got a recusal, so why don't we start with in eight? And do you have, are there questions with respect to that item? And do you have, are there questions with respect to that item? Is there a presentation that we're looking for?
Presentation's not necessary, but question.
Okay.
I don't know who will be taking that one.
We have Farina Sarbas and Sanaja Lakshman from Transmission Planning and Assets Management.
Good morning. So I appreciate the need for this adjustment and I'm glad to see it. There was just one thing about the memo I did not understand. It says, so we're effectively going to split the expense between us and Edison, roughly will be 12 million apiece. But what I didn't understand was that the Southern owners consist of a broader group than Edison and us and why there's no allocation to Burbank, Glendale, or Pasadena. That was not outlined in the memo.
Okay. So just to cover that, this amendment is basically to clarify the fact that we are, the formula for allocating the wildfire, we are actually elaborating the formula in this amendment. We are basically explicitly stating that the influence cost for PDCI will be an operational maintenance cost. It will not be an administrative and general expense, which was not in the original agreement, and certain other non-substantive provisions. So the amendment itself does not have a financial impact. Basically, all we are trying to do is clarifying how wildfire insurance will be allocated. But on the financial section, what we are covering is that, yes, the PDCI itself has five participants, which is Edison, Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, and LADWP. This amendment is specifically being executed between LADWP and Edison, and we are stating that Edison is responsible for 50% of the cost of the project and LADWP is the 40% owner and the other participants together, they constitute the 10%.
If I may add one more thing to this, and that's the question that we were working on with SCE on, you know, figuring out how the formula and allocation will, it is, it caused or triggered the amendment between us and SCE will be updated. But as a result of this, once this is approved, then all the new formulas and allocation will also apply to other participants, which are Glendale, Burbank, and.
Okay. All right. Now I understand. Thank you. That was it.
Any other questions or comments?
No, not another.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Nieman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific.
Thank you for doing this one. It's important.
Thank you.
If we could move to item M10.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Did you want me to go over the presentation?
Yeah, I think I actually saw the presentation and didn't get the context for why any of these changes were going on. And since we have many entities in Los Angeles striking for many of the benefits that we're moving towards, I wanted to understand a little bit more about the history and the context of these changes.
Okay, so on this set of amendments themselves, there are three that we're trying to pursue right now. The first one is the other governmental service. So this is buying your military time of greater than five years, buying city service, maternity leave, other city departments, not LA City, county, state, whatever, other governmental service. When we created Tier Two, we created what's known as full actual costing. So that says basically.
Can you just explain Tier One, Tier Two?
Oh, I'm sorry. So Tier One was the original plan. Everybody came in, we were members of Tier One. Tier Two, as a suspension of reciprocity, we created Tier Two, different set of benefits, different set of rules, started January 1st of 2014. So any employee hired in DWP, either directly from the outside or from the city transferring over, would start out as a Tier Two member, a completely different set of benefits. When we created that, part of that benefit package included what's known as full actual costing. So full actual costing is a way to calculate what a cost of a contract is. I want to add additional time to my service so that I can increase my pension when I retire. That cost itself is based on, the concept is based on, I'm going to pay for any additional benefit that costs the department to pay that out. So full actual costing is, there should be no costing curve by the employer at all. What we have discovered in the last eight years since the implementation of Tier Two is the way that it was developed is, for lack of a better way to explain, it's a nightmare to administer. So FA contracts is based on an individual calculation. So we ask you at the time of your request to buy the contract, when do you think you're going to retire in 30 years from now? Tell me the exact date. That's a very difficult question for most people to know, even 10 years out versus 30 years out. On top of that, we want to know, are you married or not married and how old is that person? Now tell us what you're going to buy. So based on that information, we calculate that contract out. We tell you a cost, this is how much you're going to get for that cost. 30 years out, when you actually do retire, assuming if you retire on the same date, if you're still married, then nothing changes. But if your salary changes, which, how do you know what your salary is going to be in 30 years? What your exact retirement date is, whether you got married, divorced, remarried, or whatnot, all of these causes a recalculation of that contract. So now it creates an uncertainty for our members where 30 years from now, I have to recalculate that contract. It could cost more. And you have a decision to make at that point to either pay that additional money to get that service time you bought, or you don't get that full contract and we only give you a pro rata of that contract amount. So it may kick you into another retirement calculation completely. So it's a lot of uncertainty involved. From a plan perspective, just trying to manage this, the calculation itself on an individual basis is very difficult, trying to project out what's going to happen in 30 years. From a 30-year-from-now issue where somebody is going to go to retire and I have to redo the calculation, it's not going to be instantaneous, fast calculation. It's going to be, now we have to do the calculation, it's going to take time. On top of that, how do we transfer the money or get the money in fast enough for you to pay all of this? Or do you have to delay your retirement and then we have to recalculate it again? It's all a bunch of different issues that's going to come out in 20, 30 years from now. So when we looked at this, we went to our board, the retirement board, and we asked them, this is the consequence of this plan provision. And so what can we do to make it better? One, for a member, that's my primary focus, but two, also to maintain the status for the plan as far as the financial cost and administratively to help us be able to manage this. So this is what we came up, the boards that work on it, we work with our labor partners, we work with our management to make sure that this was acceptable, and then we work with the actuary to find out a methodology that makes it viable for us and cost-effective for the plan. And so this new method says, basically, we're going to do the pool cost method and basically we do assumptions, the pool cost says, you're going to buy a certain period of time, this is how old you are, so we're going to allocate based on a percentage. But you know, as a member, at the time of purchase, what exactly you're going to get. It's going to cost you $50,000 to buy three years of service, or it's going to cost you $100,000 to buy 10 years of service. Whatever it is, you know today, there's not a true-up at the end of this where we have to recalculate and know, who knows what's going to happen. So that's what that is for us. The calculation itself for us, as for the plan, is much easier. Now it's a simple formula of, I take an actual factor that the actuary provides to us, multiply by salary and multiply by the service. So much easier for us to calculate. So that was the onus for this plan amendment itself, and that's what we're trying to do with this. On top of that, there are certain part of this where we already have 250 existing contracts that exist since 2014. So part of the plan amendment is, how do we deal with those 250? Do we leave them alone, worry about them in 30 years? Or do we proactively deal with that? And so that's part of the plan amendment is, we're going to try and go out and reach out to those 30, 250, and ask them, what do you want to do? If you want to keep it, we'll keep it. We'll deal with you in 30 years from now. But look at this new contract type, it gives you certainty. You don't have to worry about what's going to happen. Are you going to go on disability? Are you going to get married? What's going to happen? Let us give you certainty and let us make it easier on ourselves at the same time. So that's the first one. Any question on that one?
And what is it effective 2022?
That was when we started the conversation. It's been a lot of work in just trying to figure out what it is. And so we had to pick a starting point where we stopped all existing contracts instead of creating more and more contract and keep adding to this problem. We had to pick a starting point and said, this is where we're going to stop it. So we stopped making contracts as of July 1st for what's known as full actual contracts. So then, once this gets implemented, if it does get approved, then we'll go forward, calculate those. The 250 is the set amount, we just have to worry about the 250.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not on that.
The next two are pretty easy. The family death benefit was actually agreed between IBW and management during their contract negotiation. That was effective October 1st. Since then, what's going on is, they only agreed between IBW and management. So now we had to go out and talk to MEA and SEIU and all the other unions that are represented by DWP and make sure that this is across the board. So that's what's been, that's what took this a while. But it's a very easy amendment. It's currently at set at $416. We're going to increase it to $937 and the family also goes up. There's about 100 kids that are getting paid by us right now, so that's going to help those kids and we're going to go back to October. Then the last one.
This is effectively a life insurance policy.
It's basically, there are insurance policy. And then the last one is, I'm retiring from permanent total disability. So permanent disability is a pension plan concept, but the way that we run our disability is very unique to DWP. So you go on disability, you're 20 years old, 30 years old, you may be on disability for 20, 30 years. We ask you, when you turn to 65, you have to get off permanent disability, you have to retire. So if you've been on permanent disability, step back, permanent disability is 40% of your salary. So 40% of your salary 10 years ago, 20 years ago, was a very small salary. So over time, that 40% of your salary is growing by cost of living increases, 3%, just like the regular retirement. So over the last 10, 20 years, they're growing. So I have three examples in the last year since this, since January 1st, when we look back. Person started out at whatever 40% was, grew to $1,800 today. Then we tell this person, you're 65 years old now, you need to retire. That's all the plan will carry you. So we go to retire, we calculate them with their service credit as of when they first went out on disability, use the salary as when they first went out on disability. This person who is $1,800 is 65 years old, is disabled, is $600 today. So that's a travesty. I just, I don't even know where he is right now, I'm trying to find him. So these kind of things affect me a lot. So we made sure we went out and fixed this. Labor was very supportive, but they fixed this. And so we got the rest of the unions to also agree to this. So go forward, we'll fix those three people, make sure they get some more money. I mean, 1,800, I can't even live on that, but 600 is impossible. So that's what this does.
How do you actually fix it?
Well, what this fixes, I apologize. What this fixes, instead of freezing the salary as of 10 years ago, 20 years ago, we increased that salary based on a COLA assumption that we use for the plan. So we increased that salary and then also at the same time, we say, if you were on disability for at least 10 years, when you go to retire, we're going to make sure you get at least 40%. So same 40%, you would have gotten salary back then. So that person who's $1,800, I bring him back almost to the point of still getting $1,800 today.
Excellent.
So those are the three amendments. The plan amendment process itself is, we, the retirement board recommends it, DWP board approves all plan languages, all benefits in the plan, and then once if you do approve it, then we adopt it and implement it.
May I go back to the, this plan amendment around other governmental service and ask you a question related to hiring? So I imagine this is based on feedback, as you mentioned, from plan membership, that this is a sort of pain point, having to calculate this all out at the beginning of your service for what life's going to look like 30 years from now, creates that uncertainty that you mentioned hearing from folks. And this may be a question for broader executive management too, but do we anticipate that this would have any positive or negative impact on hiring? Sort of our desirability as an employer? Is this sort of anxiety around our retirement plan something that's sort of well-known external to the organization and maybe impeding people from coming to work for us right now? And does this streamline that or does it create any sort of impediment to the hiring process?
Well, I can tell you from my experience, I've talked to quite a few people who go through this process where they're thinking about, should I take that DWP job?
Right.
Giving them that answer, at least if they know, then they can make a decision for themselves. When they ask us, and all I can tell them really right now is, I can tell you it's going to be very, very expensive and there's a true-up at the end. That creates that uncertainty that I've known quite a few people who say, well, I just can't come then. I think that it will help the equation with me saying, it's expensive, but not outrageously expensive, this is what it is. Now, think how that's going to work for you in your situation.
Because I imagine that's a consideration if we want to be truly competitive as a public employer to these folks that are coming from other government agencies, other parts of the state, the city. So that's very helpful. Thank you.
I do think it will be a good thing because people buying back, particularly military service, you know, or other places they've worked, has been very popular. And so I think the certainty is a big factor.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Nieman Brady?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Before we go to the recusal, I'd like to move back up to the item that's been deferred. That would be election of officers, item C. Then we'll do the recusal and then move directly into closed session, if that's okay. And I'd just like to take a quick second to welcome our newest commissioner, to both apologize for not being here on time this morning, to do it more formally, but to tell you how excited we are to have you join the board. And as Commissioner Nieman Brady indicated, really looking forward to the application of your unique expertise as you serve this department and this city, so welcome very much.
Thank you.
So election of officers, it is that time of year, July, every year, we go back and review our officers. I would like to begin. Today, we do not have a vice president of our board. However, Commissioner Nieman Brady ably stepped in this morning to convene the, you know, the meeting and to move things forward. She has offered extremely distinguished service since her appointment to this board, brings a wealth of expertise, and I believe that we are grateful to, or that we are quite lucky to have her. I know that I am grateful to serve with her. I'd like to place a nomination, Commissioner Nieman Brady, for the vice president of the Board of Commissioners of Department of Water and Power. And I would invite her second.
I second that nomination and also second your comments on how lucky we are to have Commissioner Nieman Brady's expertise and long tenure of service.
Terrific. And before she can think about it for too much, I would invite the board secretary to call the roll.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr?
Aye.
President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Nieman Brady?
Aye.
Very good.
With five board members unanimous, motion adopted.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the role of president of the board.
I nominate.
Why?
Is there a term that you're, are you expired or?
We are re-elected or shift every year.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, that one caught me by surprise. I nominate Commissioner McLean Hill.
Second.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr?
Aye.
President, Commissioner.
Did you not hear me? I was waiting a little bit there, so yeah.
I don't know whether to say president, but Commissioner McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Nieman Brady?
Aye.
Five board members, motion adopted.
Thank you very much. I do want to say one thing to our newest commissioner. This board has for a number of years celebrated its role as the only all-female board in the city of Los Angeles. And while that has now changed, do not feel some kind of way if we describe ourselves as a majority female board moving forward. It's something that we have come to relish as a measure. as a measure of both inspiration and aspiration to women and girls. The department has been quite focused on addressing the huge disparity and gap between employment opportunities and employment of women at this department in certain classifications. And given your background and your strong commitment to equity across the board, we know that you will be an able and committed ally.
May I just say, as a queer man, it's my, it's my privilege and really my joy to stand alongside and support incredible women in my life. So I'm really honored to be here and aware that that shift is happening, but grateful for the chance to serve alongside all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then, on that note, and I know that we have part out at one, but there is, I assume there is a video that is prepped and ready to go. Marty mentioned the event that we have a number of employees at Jennifer Char, who is our head of recruitment, Latonya Bogan, who is head of partnerships. We also were joined at this event by IBW. Sean McLeod is there as well. We are engaged in building really deep relationships with the leadership statewide. And as it turns out, there were folks from across the country as well of organizations K through 12 in California. The essentially senior management of those organizations, principals, superintendents, board members, et cetera, counselors, from, it's the California African-American School Board Executive Association. And at that event, in addition to a panel, including some brilliant engineers and also members of our skilled crafts, and as I said, of labor, we've taken a couple of videos. And one that was especially prepared by Ocean, who's becoming quite the auteur, that focused on our women in skilled, in non-traditional jobs. So I, it's not one that we've shown at board. I'd really like to show it today, just to, just as a nod to women across the department and women across the city and the state that we are interested in seeing in non-traditional jobs. So if you would play that, that would be great. And I think it's Jason Beckman.
Hi, my name is Amanda Ubar. I am a water service worker for Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
My name is Erica Minor. I'm a heavy-duty truck operator with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
I'm Veronica Osteo, and I'm a steam plant operator for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power.
My name is Verline Fiero, and my position with DWP is an instrument mechanic supervisor.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Ochoa. I'm a water treatment supervisor for the Department of Water and Power, and I've been with the department for 35 years.
I started out as a steam plant assistant, which only required about one year of high school chemistry or physics. And then I proceeded through the promotional path as an instrument mechanic from there.
I enjoy my position because I get to be creative when I have to rebuild a customer's property pipe. I also enjoy working outside where the environment is constantly changing. I like to be able to work on my hands and with the different types of tools to get the job done. And I really like to think that I get to inspire other women to do this job as well.
I know that every day I go out in the field and I make a difference to the citizens of the city of Los Angeles in the clean water that they get and the power that they have provided.
So as a steam plant operator, I oversee all operations within the steam plant. So at the plant, we operate boilers, turbines, generators, and other auxiliary equipment to ensure safe and reliable electricity to the city.
I transport pipes, plates, and construction materials to the job site. What I love about this position is the freedom of being outdoors, traveling the city, and never being in the same place every day.
Some of the challenges I had to overcome was building confidence, knowing that I can perform the physically demanding portions of this job.
I rose above those challenges by understanding that I know I can do the work, whether I'm male or female. I know that I can get the job done just as well as my male counterparts.
I do consider this job as non-traditional for women because there's not a lot of women in this field.
I'm one of only two female journey-level operators in generation, and that's across all four invasive plants.
Out of four water districts, I am the only female water service worker.
I'm the only female heavy-duty truck operator out of nearly 100 in the entire department.
It is definitely a male-dominated industry. You work with tools, you work with hard hats and steel-toe boots, and you get very hands-on with instrumentation and controls. But it's definitely something that's very rewarding and worth taking the time to look into.
I think women play a vital role at LEDWP, and I think it's important to have a workforce that's representative of the city that it serves.
The role that I think women play in our department is critical, whether we're working out in the field with our hands or whether we're behind a desk doing administrative type of work. We all make a difference.
I think it's important to realize that just because it's a non-traditional role for women, doesn't mean it's not a job that you can do. The role that you choose to play is what roles you're destined to. Because if I can do it, you can do it.
This particular conference is focused on the education of girls. And our goal is to work with, you know, school executives, with counselors, with principals, to cause them to appreciate what's possible in the utility industry for girls. And to help focus them both on STEM, but also to really help them to see their career tech education as an avenue, not just for the boys, but for the girls. So that's what they were up to today. I think that we have, or not I think, we've got the one final item. So we will have a board member leave so that we, thank you, can deal with item number five. All right. Is there a motion to approve item number M5?
So moved.
I'll second. Would you call the roll?
Commissioner Lehrer? President McLean Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Nieman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Terrific. And Julie, you will take us into closed session?
Yes. The board shall recess into closed session. After closed session, the board will publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention thereon of every member present in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54957.1.
Terrific. We will now recess into closed session. And we'd appreciate folks vacating the room. We'll keep this room. I think it'll be quicker and easier for us to do what we have to do.